Please stand.
Dear Lord, please be with us today to help and guide us to make good decisions for the whole of Highland Township. Help us bring back our God-given rights, rights that you have bestowed upon us to protect our environment, to live a life free from toxins, and guide those that need your guidance. Amen.
Amen.
Praise the Lord.
The flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like each of the commissioners to introduce yourself and if you would like to tell us a little bit about the reasons you're on the Study Commission. And I can begin. My name is John Gurus, Chair of the Government Study Commission. The reason for being on the Study Commission comes from not having a voice in local matters. I believe that all of the citizens through their vote should have a voice on decisions made on local matters, along with the freedom, choice, and protections to participate if they so choose, in tailoring and developing their government to address the specific and unique needs of Highland Township, rather than a handful of people who are to represent our best interests making all the decisions, which sometimes may be against the will of the people they serve. Home Rule is a way to provide protections for Highland Township citizens through including rights for people currently absent from the current form of government in the Second Class Township Code, and provide a voice through the Initiative Referendum process, also missing from the code.
I'm Lloyd Huelings and I'm on the Home Rule as Vice President. Reason why I like the Home Rule is to try to give the voice back to the people.
I'm Matt Vaughn, I'm on the Home Rule Study Commission. The reason why I am on the Home Rule Study Commission is because I think people should take more concern in their local government and take a precedence so they're all involved in their government. Just using Highland Township for an example, we elect three officials. I think people should continually be interested and have a voice in the community of what's going on, so we can all do our decisions together.
I'm Bellinger, I'm on the Study Commission to give the rights back to the people, the voting back to the people on township matters.
I'm Amy Beers, I'm from Russell City, and I too am on the Home Rule Study Commission to give the voice back to the people.
I'm Ms. Edinger, I'm from James City, I'm the Secretary Treasurer of the Home Rule. The reason why I got involved is because I like to be educated in things that affect my community, that affect my lives, affect my property. So this was a way to, number one, educate myself on what's available for me and us as neighbors of the community. I also think that each and every one of us should not be represented by a minority. I think we should have majority representation, our voices should be heard, and our issues and our concerns should be granted some kind of value. And currently, and for a very long time, in the United States government, I don't believe that our voices and issues and concerns have been given much of a value. I think Highland Township should have a value again.
Now, are you guys like, like, one, two, three, four, five, six, is there like three in three Republicans and Democrats?
Nope. No.
Actually, that's never came up what our voting jurisdiction is.
I mean, you would think it should be like an equal amount, or at least one way or another, it shouldn't just have like all in one and none of the other.
It never came up with our affiliation.
Doesn't matter.
Our political affiliation has nothing into Home Rule Committee, and we aren't just a committee of seven. I mean, of six, we are a committee of seven. Judy Uzetti has been appointed just recently to our vacancy, so there is seven of us, and as soon as she is sworn in, she'll be sitting at the table with us.
Who brought this Home Rule into our township? Local people or somebody from out of town?
The voters.
Well, I know that.
No, it's all local voters, because actually this was on the election board for us to take a look. What we're trying to do is review the Second Class Township Book and see if we want to make any changes. We might not make any changes, but what we're looking in is trying to tailor something specifically for Highland Township. What works better for you as a citizen.
And Home Rule isn't new, it is something that has been in the country for, since the late 1800s, including Pennsylvania. It's not a new concept, it's new and foreign to maybe us, but it's been done, it's been studied. This isn't a new concept for us as a nation.
Well, if it's been studied, is it a good thing or a bad thing?
That, still, that's in part of our study.
Oh, so we're part of the study.
That's what we're studying, whether it's a good thing or a bad thing.
Yes, we're part of the study. Right now, St. Mary's is Home Rule, St. Mary's is all Home Rule.
That's why I live there.
Warren, Warren City is Home Rule.
That's why I live there.
I don't think it is.
Youngsville, yes.
Youngsville is.
Yeah, Youngsville, Warren City.
Now, what about them Rails to Trails, you said that the Rails to Trails bought the Trail, so now what's the deal with there?
We're not sure about the Rails to Trails.
How are you gonna police the people that come, like, come from Pittsburgh and these thieves and criminals that come in here that wanna, they wanna come down their darn thing and scope out like a house that's out in the middle of nowhere. Because I heard like down in Pittsburgh where they put the Rails to Trails by their house, then people had to move out because their houses were getting robbed and they were coming back and fornicaating in front of their kids and everything.
That can happen anywhere, you've got people that come up here and maul them.
No, but sir, actually what we're trying to do, if that is something that you're worried about, and that's why we're glad you're here, that way it's something, if we do decide to write a new chapter, that's something, people in a Home Rule Study Commission, if you have a problem.
I already signed this through the meeting.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Because this part, you'll have to bring that up at the regular Township meeting.
Oh, okay.
This is the Home Rule meeting, the Township meeting is on August 10th.
Okay.
That won't fit in there? Yeah, we're out to give the rights back to you guys. Your concerns right there?
Right, that's what I was wondering, because you're the Home Rule, I figured you guys should already, you should already be in on that. My rights, my rights back from who? My rights back from who?
It gives the rights back to you.
Well, who has them now?
Right now, the Township makes the decision, the three Township Supervisors makes the decision of whether, like, if you're allowed to have dogs on your property, they can make an ordinance to take away that or write that.
That's the way it's always been.
The Home Rule will give those rights back to you as a voter, it'll give you the rights to say whether you want that, dogs on your property, or you don't want dogs. Right now, that's up to the three Township Supervisors to decide that, not the people.
What's wrong with what we have?
I think a lot of this will be explained in our future PowerPoint.
What's wrong with what we have?
Yeah.
Because there's three people making decisions that a lot of people don't like.
And the decisions that affect the state.
Well, then we vote them out, don't we?
You don't vote them out. It's impossible to remove a supervisor.
Oh, I wouldn't say that.
Well, let's watch our PowerPoint.
Maybe you could help us with that.
If you wouldn't vote them out, why do we all vote against them? I mean, it's not a lifetime thing like a judge, a supervisor.
While you're in staunch in your term, there is very little that you can do to remove a supervisor. And what this does, if you have a voice of reason, you can actually go around and have an agenda put forward that can go on the election ballot, like your Rails to Trails thing.
And then, and then we can take the Home Rule and we don't like that supervisor, we can get him impeached through the homelands rule.
We get, have it put onto the ballot and have the people voted.
Get it removed the next election cycle.
At this time, we're gonna show you our presentation, our PowerPoint presentation, we'll have discussion afterwards.
Yeah, in the backtrack, we also have Chad Nicholson and Natalie Long from Seldef with us today.
Thank you.
And then I introduce you guys. Alright, so. Our function and duty of the Commission. The Government Study Commission shall study the form of government of the municipality to compare it to all, with other available forms under the laws of the Commonwealth and determine whether or not, in its judgment, the government could be strengthened or made more clearly responsible or accountable to the people, or whether its operation could become more economical or efficient under a changed form of government.
This is a timeline of some of the work that we've done so far. You can see on April 26th, that's where we, the group Study Commission was approved by the voters. On, in May, we got sworn in, and right before the 26th, we were, our first meeting, we voted on officers and retained our, retained Seldef. After that, we passed our budget, we proposed and passed a budget, and I have that here for review if anybody would like to see that. For the next couple of meetings here, we reviewed our different studies, we reviewed the Second Class Township Code and took notes and spoke about that, reviewed the Pennsylvania Constitution, the US Constitution, and the Declaration of Independence. Those are our studies. Once we got together and did all of our studies independently between the three different, we broke into three different committees, and you'll see that on the following slide here, we formalized those studies and we made a plan for public hearing today. Between then and now, we had a conference call with Grant Township and a interview with our current Township Supervisors. The conference call with Grant Township is to see how they're doing it. Grant Township is a small township, a lot like Highland, that's dealing with a lot of the same issues, the same kind of things as Highland is. And they've already, they are a Home Rule municipality, they have just recently passed that and put it in, and so we've got a lot of information from Grant Township. We interviewed our Township Supervisors, that was open to the public, you can see it on YouTube. I do have the questions that were asked to our Township Supervisors and some of the answers that were given, if anybody wants to see that. And that brings us up here today to our public hearing. So I'm sure everybody knows, wants to know here what a Home Rule Charter is. And it says here, "A Home Rule Charter is basically a constitution for the township, replacing the Second Class Township Code under which the township currently works. Under a Home Rule Charter, instead of being limited to only rules established by this state, in the Second Class Township Code, Highland Township can act and organize its government in a manner best suited for us as a community, as long as it changes that are not restricted or limited by state laws, which are called laws of general applicability." Three major examples of general applicability laws, the Vehicle Code, Firearms Code, and Crime Code. We cannot do anything with those. These are some examples of what the Home Rule Charter may address.
Ordinance adoption. Currently, our three Township Supervisors may address ordinances and pass or get rid of one currently in place without much input from the community. Meetings. Their meetings can be planned or canceled as long as they are advertised according to the Sunshine Law. And vacancies, if the Board of Supervisors cannot decide on how a vacancy on their board should be filled, a judge from a Court of Common Pleas makes a decision without the input of the community. Examples of what Home Rule Charters may not address. Laws on decriminalizing drug use. Home Rule cannot make an illegal drug legal in Highland Township. Assessment of property, this is done by Elk County. Elections. Home Rule cannot change when elections are held or where. Municipal tax claims or liens. Home Rule cannot stop Elk County from selling your real estate for unpaid taxes.
What have we learned so far? A thorough review, a thorough review of the existing form of government is done to determine if it meets the needs of the people currently and for the future. These needs are then elevated in the study process for that which the current, which currently exists. What may not currently exist, or that which currently conflicts with what is desired. In the process of examining, we broke off into three subcommittees to take, to tackle the 100-page Second Class Township Book.
Which is right there.
Committee one was Mrs. Beers and Mrs. Edinger. The study they, they studied from the beginning of the code and stopped at the end of Section 2, Article 7. Topics covered were county and the State Association of Townships, Township Leans and Boundaries, Township's Elections, Duties of a Supervisor and Auditors, etc. Committee two was Mr. Vaughn and Mr. Edinger. They studied the beginning of Section 2, Article 8, and stopped at the end of Section 2, Article 24. Topics covered were corporation powers, roads, streets, bridges, and highways, fire prevention and protection, supervisor policies, streetlights, solid waste collection, and parks, recreations, centers, and forestry. Committee three was Mr. Gurus and Mr. Huelings. They studied the beginning of Article 2, Section 9, and stopped at the end of the code. Sections were covered were sidewalks, footpaths, and curbs, sanitary sewage, water supplies, stormwater, stormwater management, manufacturing and sales of electricity, Shade Tree Commission, Board of Health, etc. Also, I'm sorry, also in our studies, Pennsylvania Constitution, United States Constitution, United States Declaration of Independence. How could the Second Class Township form of government be strengthened or made more clearly responsible or accountable to the people? The government in Highland Township can be strengthened by the voters making decisions collectively. The Second Class Township form of government could be strengthened by allowing the various citizens of Highland Township to make decisions through a majority vote. We can make our government more accountable by eliminating protections currently in place for minority representation.
How could the Second Class Township form of government become more economical or efficient under a changed form of government? A Home Rule Charter could provide organizational flexibility that would free the township from requirements for Second Class Townships in Pennsylvania. It can offer potential to solve budget problems and lessen the dependence of property tax increases by controlling costs better. Economically, the Second Township could be strengthened through greater citizen involvement by vote or petition in an accountable way such as setting tax limitations. In what ways does the Second Class Township Code differ from other governing documents such as the Declaration of, excuse me, Independence, the PA Constitution, and the US Constitution? The Second Class Township Code gives big industry rights over the people. The constitutions were for the people, by the people, this is what this country was built on, and gives the right back to the people. The Declaration mandates that representative government must respond to efforts to protect human rights. The Declaration and the US Constitution make it clear that the ultimate decision of how to best protect our rights remains secure in the people. The Second Class Township Code is the least responsive to its citizens.
Does the code provide for the need and desire of the community and best represent the principles of a democratic society? No. There is little to no flexibility in the current code, and there are protections in place for political minority representation. There are also protections in place that secure the rights of corporations and big bank accounts, holders, that are not in the best interest of the landowners and the residents of Highland Township. The Second Class Township Code and Dylan's Rule is the exact opposite of a democratic society, as it disallows citizen input and citizen health and safety, and are not always a priority. What's the relationship between the state and the Highland Township outlined in the code? The state has control of most things and does not provide the flexibility needed to make sound decisions for the people of Highland Township. Being governed, being governed by the laws developed by a generic law does not work, does not work for our very un-genetic issues. Who wrote the code and what were the priorities they had in mind as they wrote variation, various sections? State legislation, state legislator, legislature, wrote the code for the purpose to authorize a Board of Supervisors to make and adapt ordinances, bylaws, rules and regulations that are deemed necessary for the proper management and control of the township in order to maintain sound government and protect the safety and welfare of its citizens. However, this code was written in 1933, and many of today's issues are not addressed. In the code, and if the code does not specifically address an issue, it is considered beyond the control of the Board of Supervisors. The Second Class Township Code is
Generic.
Generic, excuse me, and one size fits all.
Does the code allow for decisions to be made on issues that are unique to Highland Township? This code was largely written in 1933, and many of today's issues are not addressed in the code, and if the code does not specifically address an issue, it is considered beyond the scope of the Township Board of Supervisors, therefore allowing decisions to be made by people who do not have to live with the consequences of their decisions. What is the relationship of the code to the rights of those living in Highland Township? The code does not provide protection of the rights of those living in Highland Township. Big bank account holders and corporate America have more rights than the taxpayers of Highland Township. Does, go ahead.
I'm sorry, huh? Does the code give Highland Township residents the tools they need to determine the future of Highland Township? No. Our world is changing at a rapid pace, and the code allows industries' rights to supersede human rights, therefore engaging the health and the welfare of citizens of Highland Township. Engaging, I'm sorry. And stripping Highland Township of the ability to voice their concerns and flexibility to enforce laws and ordinances to protect their lives and property. The codes are generic. Our laws need to be personalized to the needs, issues of Highland Township to be effective. We believe that the current decision-making is endangering all of Highland Township residents along with those who live around Highland Township. We believe that our rights, health, well-being, and safety are not a priority in Highland Township anymore. Summary. The Highland Township Study Group has put a great deal of effort into studying the various forms of government that could be available to residents in Highland Township. Over the next several meetings, the Commission will take into consideration each of the comments and concerns expressed to it by Township residents and develop a government structure that provides for the township and its citizens' needs while operating in the most efficient manner possible, and still giving the government body and the authority and flexibility it needs to make the operational decisions set before it. Residents are encouraged to attend the meetings and future forums. Residents may also address the Commission members via email at Highland, well, we can all read that. Highland, T W P, P H O N E, at Comcast dot net.
It's Highland Township Home Rule at Comcast dot net.
I couldn't read, I'm sorry guys, I couldn't see that much.
This is just an example of our current structure versus a possible future structure. Now, mind you, this is just possible future structure, and no decisions have been made. Currently, the name of our elected officials are supervisors. Possible Home Rule structure is not to change this, going to leave it as it stands as the supervisors. Number of elected officials, currently we have three. Possible future structure is still three. Residence requirement to be an elected official in Highland Township is one year. Home Rule may not change that. Tax collector is a one-year, one is elected for a four-year term, again, no change. Failure to adopt a budget. Currently, if Highland Township fails to adopt a budget, there is nothing in the Second Class Township Code to tell them what to do. Possibly, in a new future, there'd be a prior year budget and taxation effective, therefore if a budget is not passed, we, it would not cripple Highland Township, we have something to go back on. Again, these are just possible future things, nothing has been decided and nothing has been voted on. Ordinance proposal and passage, they currently, they may be proposed and passed with a very short amount of time without much public input. A future is referendum process will be adopted and can come to a public decision and vote. Like, they make an ordinance that aggrieves you, you can come to a township meeting with a petition or a reason for that aggrievement and actually make it an issue. Currently, there's nothing you can do for it. Votes needed to pass an ordinance or resolution is currently two. Possible future is unless an emergency, ordinances that are against popular opinion can be referred to the referendum process, such as bringing in a petition to the supervisors and getting them to relook at it, and if they still, if it's a big enough issue, we can bring it to a vote. Every ordinance, every law, every reference does not have to be brought to a ballot, but possibly in our future, we could bring things that are important to a ballot. Currently, a vacancy on the Board of Supervisors, if the two remaining supervisors cannot decide, the Court of Common Pleas will support somebody, appoint someone.
Yeah.
This has been done twice in Highland Township in three years. A possible future structure would be vacancy to be filled by the two remaining supervisors until the next general election time. Then it will be placed on the ballot. If they cannot make unanimous decision, the office remains empty until the next general election. I understand we could go if the Township Supervisor, we can go, you know, six months without a third supervisor, but we've already done that in the past, we've been there, done that, we know how that works. Our last structure item here is a Bill of Rights. Currently, the Second Class Township Code is silent. There is no Bill of Rights in the Second Class Township Code. In a possible future structure, we can have wording that makes it very clear that we seek to make protecting the health, safety, and welfare of the community and its rights and its environment extremely important. Other issues facing Highland Township.
Human rights. Poisoning of our water.
Let me read. It's not on here.
Damn, just done.
Thank you for coming, we'll have lots of discussion here. Also, we would encourage you to come to a Government Study Commission meeting. They're usually Thursdays at 7:00. Meetings are held at one of three places, one's here at the Highland Municipal Building. We also have them at the Highlands Sportsman's Club and at the Snow Forest Club. These are held at different places for the convenience of Highland Township residents. Information is always posted to the Highland Township's Home Rule Facebook. We have various community outreach meetings, and you can also write a letter to us if you're not into emailing, you can write a letter to us, and there is our add. You can also write a letter to us. If you're not into emailing, you can write a letter to us, and there is our address.
I found it.
Most importantly, Highland Township group study commissioners want to hear from you, from all of the residents of Highland Township.
What is missing from the code? The code does not support wording that would seek to make protecting the health and safety of this community and its environment important. Inalienable rights, basic individual rights, a bill of rights, wording that directly represents the people living within Highland Township, not just the roads, building and land in Highland Township. Our inalienable rights are being ignored as the rights of people are not mentioned in the code. The enumeration of rights for the community. Right now, any rights in the code are the rights of the supervisors to do the jobs that the state tells them to do. The code is not written to protect rights. Code is currently there to limit rights. The code is clearly different from the PA Constitution, which has a declaration of rights at the beginning. Rights recognized by the PA Constitution, Article One, Section Two, which states, "All power is inherent to the people, and all free governments are founded on their authority and instituted for their peace, safety and happiness. For the advancement of these ends, they have at all times an inalienable and indefeasable right to alter, reform or abolish their government in such a manner they may think proper." In Article One, Section Twenty-Six, which states, "Neither the Commonwealth or any political subdivision thereof shall deny any person the enjoyment of any civil right nor discriminate against any person in the exercise of any civil right." Article One, Section Twenty-Seven, which states, "The people have a right to clean air, pure water, and to the preservation of the natural, scenic and historic and aesthetic values of environment. Pennsylvania's public natural resources are the common property of all people, including generations yet to come. As a trustee of these resources, the Commonwealth shall conserve and maintain them for the benefit of all people." Rights recognized by the Declaration of Independence, life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness.
I just want to reiterate that our job up to this point and in the future was to undertake the study of the Highland Township's current form of government, which is the second-class township code. We've also studied the Home Rule Book. Pennsylvania, every one of us had a copy of this.
Can I have a copy?
Yes. We also studied, we've also studied the Pennsylvania Constitution, which is available to anybody online, and the US Declaration of Independence, again, is available online in the US Constitution. Those were the three things that we studied. We had interviews with two other municipalities, one being Grant Township, and also an interview with our current township supervisors.
I just want to mention one more thing. This is what's wrong with the code, which is it is a one-size-fits-all legislation that does not allow Highland Township to make governing decisions that would differ from more than a thousand other townships in the state. It was written by a state legislator, not by the people of the community. It was never voted on by the people of Highland Township. It is the form of government we got, not the one we wanted. Article fifteen, Section fifteen oh six, under general powers, makes it law that the township must comply with every and any law and regulation set forth by the Commonwealth. The code puts the township as a governing body squarely at the bottom of the pile. The code seems designed for larger, more populated areas, too big for such a small place like Highland Township. With the code, the people also have no say over important decisions and allows no flexibility. The code is not democratic. We vote for supervisors, and that's it. If the community has any wants or desires that aren't in the code, that's too bad. The code mostly just focuses on things like money, buildings, property, and has almost nothing to do with the people. The code's priorities are mostly about allocations of money, and since Highland Township has no money, we felt that that makes us not valuable and not worthy and not represented. It does not allow for local decision-making on many issues so that it protects the interests of large industries and corporations from too much democracy from the people. The state assigns us tasks they didn't want to do and then limits Highland Township to doing just those tasks, like road maintenance or setting up streetlight fund. It does seem that larger entities like the state or cities want to absorb what they can from small rural communities. The code does not allow for decisions to be made on issues that are unique to Highland Township. State preemption, when a state writes laws for the entire state for specific activities where municipalities have no governing authority, it becomes illegal for the township to make laws concerning these activities. Coal, sewage, sludge application, oil and gas, farming and timber.
We've also retained Community Environmental Legal and Defense Fund, S L D F, as an advisory role for legal, historical and research purposes and for general assistance. Examining government isn't something that any of us are particularly loaded with experience. To quote page twenty-one of the Pennsylvania Home Rule Handbook, Seventh Edition, the Home Rule Law specifically allows a commission to retain consultants. Available local resources in the complexity of the government being studied help determine the needs for outside assistance. Unanimously, the six of us voted to have that outside assistance. S L D F has years of experience in all things Constitution, and Chad Nicholson has been a front of information in local governance in Pennsylvania since day one.
Who's Chad Nicholson?
He's from S L D F. He's here.
As soon as we're done for our presentation, we'll ask for questions. Just give us a second, please.
Yeah, we're ready for public, we're ready for public comments. Go ahead. We're ready for public comments now.
Go ahead.
When I went up to vote for this home rule stuff, there's a few people in here said that we were going to eliminate the three supervisors. Now, on home rule, we're not eliminating those supervisors. We're keeping them all. Now, what the hell?
Marsha and I, was that, we came to your house?
Oh, I'm talking about on election day, too. Get rid of three supervisors. That way amongst the people. Well, according to that, we still got three supervisors, and the next three things down, we still got the same supervisors.
And what we tried to explain to you was
What the hell?
I don't know how you got misinformed that way.
Oh, I got misinformed by that.
Okay, what we told you, though, was that
On what's your day?
It's not only going to be those three supervisors making the local decisions that with home rule.
Three supervisors.
All of us will.
No, three supervisors.
Yeah, they'll still be able to vote on.
Well, what the hell we try to do here?
We still have to have people that are there to do our day-to-day functions. Home rule cannot, we have, do the day-to-day functions. We still need those supervisors to do that, to perform those duties. The difference between our current and what we will have is when important issues come up.
Everything's important. I don't have fresh water. Never have and never will. Can you fix that? No.
We can put a vote in. You can bring it to the supervisors.
Misty?
Yes.
Wouldn't it be with this home rule, you still have the supervisors. You're supposed to be working for the people, right?
Correct.
Now, with home rule, what we vote for, they have to put in effect.
Exactly.
There you go.
Our word means more under a home rule municipality than a second-class township code. You're absolutely right, Linda.
Then why do we need three supervisors for?
Because they'd put it in action.
Because they still do the day-to-day
Operations.
Operations of the township. That will still
But their power is lessened because now the people have a vote.
We still have to have somebody ordering the gravel, dispensing the road crews.
Oh, I'm sure. I'm sure we do.
In a home rule, municipality will still need that kind of stuff, and that's going to be the role, just like it is currently.
So if we get home rule, all the ordinances go up, they get thrown out, which I read in the newspaper?
No.
No.
That's the township doing that.
No, that's, no, currently, home rule does not throw out any of the current ordinances.
That's why I read the newspaper.
Not from the home rule, the township. If you read the township part in there.
Currently, we are not, home rule will not get rid of any of the township ordinance and that kind of stuff. What it means is when we become home rule, that you can, if any of those ordinances agree with you at any point, you can come to the township, voice your opinion, maybe bring it to a vote of the entire community and make your voice heard. Right now, you can come to the township supervisors, complain about the ordinance, and they can just throw it out. Nothing can be, nothing will be done.
You said yourself that you can't even see the ordinances. Both of you girls said you can't even see the ordinances.
Ordnances.
Now, how can I see them if you guys can't see them?
Well, you can see them. You can see the ordinances if you want from the township. You can ask. You can come up, fill out a write-to-note to get the ordinances. What we are saying is if you think something is wrong, and you can get a petition signed, you will have a voice to change it, sir.
I think if I pay my taxes, I should be able to do what I want in my yard.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Do you have a question, sir?
Yes.
We heard a lot about the Second Amendment. Every other sentence was the Second Amendment.
The second-class township code.
That's what we're trying to do away with the Second Amendment.
That was not the Second Amendment.
It's the second-class township code.
It's this book here.
We mentioned the Second Amendment many times.
No, second-class township code.
Township code. It's this book here that we're talking about. This is what we studied.
Well, wouldn't it be nice if the rest of the township could study the same book?
You can. We'll give you
I get one. Can I have one?
Not that one.
Not this one you can't.
Why not?
You will, you will at the end of the
Are we going to pay the other minions that's going to be on this?
We're not getting paid, John.
We're not getting paid.
We're not getting paid.
This is a voluntary position.
And who's going to be on this committee?
Once we're done, John.
The people out of, down the road or out in my country?
Well, what we're looking for, John, is for you to come here, just like your problem. You were up and you had a problem with your road. We want you to come up. We want more people that's out there going through the same problem because we want to help get it fixed. We are trying to give you more of a voice instead of coming up here and you're talking. And basically, when I was up to meeting, not too much happened. We're trying to give you more of a voice to try and fix what is wrong with our township, John.
Well, my feeling in this whole thing is that the three gentlemen that are representing us right now are representing it to the best of their ability with no money. Now, they have fixed the road somewhat. They are fixing their road somewhat. They probably can't do what Sonny does. I don't know if any of them agree about what Sonny could do, but that's a different story. But I'm sitting here listening to a group of people who tell me that they're going to come in and there's going to be a multitude of government telling the government what to do. That's not going to work.
I think you misunderstand.
You misunderstand what we're saying.
Poisoning the water. Now, this is a big thing. We spent a lot of money so far trying to stop it. Now, our supervisor, he threw his attorney out, and we're not going to try to stop it unless you people come up with another way to stop it. And we're not being represented anymore by the free representation. We hired an attorney out of Warren, apparently, according to the paper, to represent Al Conny. And it's to my understanding that nobody in Al Conny, that his attorney was even approached.
No, they weren't. Actually, John, I think the attorney out of Erie, that our insurance company, is the one that's representing us right now in the fight. So our insurance
Well, it was in the paper.
I, I
It's my understanding that they said that they could not, the supervisor wouldn't talk to them, so they were going to cancel.
Well, I mean, I've been to a few more meetings than you. I'm pretty sure that the solicitor, not solicitor, our solicitor's out of Warren, and I don't want to be misquoted because I'm not a supervisor. But I'm pretty sure the attorney that our insurance company handled is the one that's dealing with Seneca right now.
Well, that's very good. We're working against a billion-dollar company with numbers.
Currently
Can win even if you want to do it.
It hasn't been our job to this point to, to take on the injection well, right.
To go against these people. Now, you're going to tell me another six-man committee is going to try to go against them?
No, it's not a six-man committee.
It's improbable and possible.
It's all the voters.
We're, we are finished with this job. This committee dissolves. As soon as, if a decision is made to write a charter, this committee dissolves. Or if a decision is not made to write a charter and more study is needed, then we continue to study the second-class township code. Or if the decision is made to, no more study is needed, and we decide not to write a charter, then instantly that committee dissolves. The committee of the seven people that you see sitting here is not forever. It's not going to stay. We will dissolve as soon as a decision is made.
On election day.
Or an election is done.
And the first comment you made is, why weren't you informed? Or weren't you able to get like a code book prior to this? We've had every one of our meetings public and in the newspaper. If you would have came to any of those, we've offered that to you. And today, that's basically what this hearing is also for, is this is our first public hearing. So we're here to inform you and provide you with those materials.
Well, that's very kind.
Provide you with a way to get those materials.
Because honestly, John, we'd like to have you at your meetings, at our meetings. We'd like to have your voice at our meetings.
Because I'm going to have a heart attack here.
Well, I know.
I'm not being facetious.
Me too.
I've got a pacemaker, and it's tough. It's tough to come in here and listen to people argue over
No, we're not arguing.
I know you're not arguing now, but when I come to meetings, there is arguments. And it's unnecessary at a public meeting to have one group here, one group here, one group here, and nothing's done. And that's the thing.
Yes, that's the township meetings.
We're basically looking at, John, if we think we can do any more to tailor the municipal code to help Highland Township expressly.
Well, in the same token, you're talking dynasty. You're talking a group that's going to tell another group what to do, and we're supposed to come here.
No, but the difference is, John, what happens? If we do have a finding, you, as one of the voters, are going to have to vote on this. If the mass of the people do not believe in our charter, if we do write a charter, this has to be voted on. This has to be voted on. That's why when I said we want people like you to come, we want you to come give us your input to see if, maybe nothing does need change in the township. But we want everybody's input to see if something isn't working. Something can go better for Highland. Something to help us do better, or maybe it's okay. That's what we're all about.
One of the nice things that would probably happen in this community that I can see that would probably help everybody out of this mess is if you would go to National Fuel, Seneca, ask them to put a pipeline from Jack's Garage out here and get the water, and put it in for nothing, and put the sewage out here and do away with a little bit of this excess money. Where does the money go in this township?
It's a very good question.
Well, that's what I'd like to know. You said we're a poor, you said we're a poor township. I've never known us to be a poor township.
I didn't mean it that.
No, no, but I
But I went up here and asked to have gravel and holes fixed, and they told me they were broke.
I think
Now, how the hell can it be broke?
Exactly. I think we spent in the past two years
We want to know why.
I think in the past two years, we spent, and don't quote me on this, almost three hundred thousand bucks. We're just trying to see if we can help out, basically, the supervisors and the people of Highland Township to make things more responsible and better. Streamline things, John. That's all we're trying to do.
The ones that have invested their money and everything, they can't touch it.
Transparent.
They got the money. If they touch it, they'll get, you know, they'll have to pay a penalty or something. You know, they changed everything around. They've got a reserve fund. They don't want to use that.
Any other comments?
You know, I mean, who knows what's going on now?
Yeah, that's, that's why we want people to get more involved. I mean, that's the whole thing. I mean, I know it's hard for you to come to the meetings because our meetings are bad. We come up here, our monthly meetings are bad. But it should be, there shouldn't be no argument, and it should be more transparency. We should know what more what's going on in our own township. Mr. Garrity?
Man, one thing I think, this is an informative point. This meeting has nothing to do with the supervisor, the township supervisor meetings, what's going on today. This is in order to fix them. So what you're talking about coming to these meetings, this meeting is not today, a township meeting. This is a home rule charter.
Well, I understand that.
Okay. Well, I just want to make sure that you understand, because I'm sitting here listening to you say that
Well, I'm talking about township meetings. I said that it's hard for me to attend. Now, this meeting here is at least we can talk.
And I'm sorry if I missed And I'm sorry if I misinformed you, and I'm sorry if I misinformed the public.
We're not coming to the Home Rule meetings, not the township meetings.
Nobody, nobody minds coming to these meetings as long as people are sane. But when it gets insane, it's, it's difficult, very much so.
I agree.
We agree with that. We agree one hundred percent.
But so far, things have been running other than relatively smooth in our township. But I don't understand what we're doing here right now. I misunderstood what was being read up there, because Meredith can hear.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't speak very loud.
No, what do you, the other lady there, and I don't mean to be facetious.
That's okay.
It's hard to hear you when you're talking, especially the other ones. You know, but that's all right, because I'm going to get one of these books and I'll read it. But I, I just can't see what six people are going to do to a group of three who already have their decisions.
It's not, it's not, it's not the group of seven, John, because everything, if we do decide to proceed at this study commission and write a charter, you are going to have just as much to do with it as me, because it will have to be voted in. It will be on the election to be voted in.
All right. And, and when it's voted in, what transpired? You tell them what to do?
No, we go away.
We go away.
We go away.
We go away.
Now, what the hell's the sense of having to leave?
You're misunderstanding. John's saying what has to say, what is happening is, then you, as a person from the township, will have a voice to tell the supervisors. The three supervisors cannot make a decision without, without input from the community.
Basically, what we're doing is we're going to amend this. And let's just say, I can't even use an example. We're looking, if we want to, to amend the second-class township book to make it more viable for Highland Township.
I want one too, pal.
That's an extra one I had. John, what this does, if you vote on this, this becomes actually their binding law that the supervisors have to follow.
Are you going to interrupt their meeting to tell them what they're going to do?
They have to follow it, John. That's just the same reason why they have to follow the second-class township book. That's part of the way, that's part of the way this works.
So, you're six or seven or eight or ten providing to be asked to win and complain about something.
No, 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 no. It will be written, the charter, the charter will actually, look at this as, it's going to be, this is what governs Highland Township.
Those are my personal studies in there.
But this also.
It would be better for you to have something that you're not, you won't be swayed by my personal opinions and comments that I have posted.
I'm sure.
That's what we're trying, and it's a hard concept to get through, John, but that's, and all of us aren't great speakers or whatnot, but that's the point we're trying to get across to you, sir.
If something, if someone wants something changed, it can be done individually, correct?
Correct. With a referendum.
And that will only be done, well, after a vote?
Right. It can't be done individually. It has to be done by, it can be majority of the township citizens.
It can be brought to the supervisors at township individually, right? And can it only be changed at a general election? Can things be changed in the primary too?
That's how that's written in the Home Rule Charter. If it's decided upon to write one, we'll have to decide on how to, you know, write that, what the exact way to do things are and that kind of stuff will be. That has not yet been decided on how that's going to happen. If we write a Home Rule Charter, there'll definitely be something in there about it. We are unsure at this time what that would be, though.
The state law, Chad Nicholson with Seldef, the state law governing Home Rule charters, if there is one that's enacted, says that it can be amended twice a year. Once at the primary elections and once at the general elections in the fall. And that vote can only happen if a resident of the township or voter initiates that petition, gets a number of signatures on that petition, that then gets submitted to the Board of Elections, and then there can be a vote on that proposal twice a year at the primary elections or the general elections.
And that's for a change in our charter, not for a change in an ordinance.
I think there's only one or two people in this whole township that could go around and get a petition. The young lady sitting here could probably.
We're lucky we have her.
If we had Home Rule now.
Well, no, I just, I wanted to get that out because I don't think it's said enough.
I agree. I agree. It's a lot more than most. But what I'm trying to say to you is, you, you've got to go around to the whole township and try to get a petition signed. You know, there's not going to be too many people that would even think about doing that.
But if you believe in change that much, and something that, that grievous that you believe in, somebody will do it.
And currently.
Right now, imagine a petition can go around. Right now, as a form of government, you can bring however many petitions you want to the supervisors, and they don't have to listen to it.
They don't listen to it right now.
They don't listen to them.
They don't listen to them right now.
Change the form of government, saying we, the people of Highland Township, have a right to vote, and we choose what we want, not two people sitting up front at a meeting. So, that's what this is all about, is getting the voice back to the people rather than you coming to a township meeting, having a heart attack complaining to somebody. This way, the community is going to be informed.
I don't have a heart attack complaining to somebody. I have a heart attack, the people don't shoot somebody.
What we're trying to get at is, it's the community.
I think we're no.
Well, there's not two, there's three.
Only six to vote out of three voters. You have that majority of the people to vote on.
He's good. That's good. This is good discussion.
And that's what this is about today, is make sure the people have a vote. And it's not just your township.
Well, it's going to continue to be two people voting, as we are.
No, not with this Home Rule. It'll give the vote back to the people instead of two people making the decision. It'll give the vote back to the people.
Well, are they going to be able to make a decision that they're going to purchase so much gravel, so much asphalt, so much time's worth?
That's regular township business. That's regular township business. The main stuff that is discussed, like ordinances, getting rid of ordinances, putting ones in place, all that, that'll be the citizens' decision, not just two people. It'll bring it up to the whole Highland Township to vote on whether this ordinance should go in, this ordinance should go out. It just takes the pressure off the township supervisors and gives it back to the whole community.
They were invited. They were invited. I've walked all over Highland.
I know you have.
They can't complain that it's just James City. I've been all over Highland.
They ain't been to my house about this date. Damn, Bimel came and got me. I didn't know about it.
I've been to your house a couple times. We don't want to discuss it.
Yeah, that's right. We don't.
You should have got a flyer.
But in a way, you can look at this.
Your P O box. Do you have a mail?
Nope.
You don't have mail?
Nope.
I mean, it's always been James City, James City, James City. I think all of Highland should have decisions on what we're going to make.
Yeah, but we're different from James City. We live in Highland. And most city people are different from James City people.
Not to me, sir. I think we're all Highland. That's why I'm sitting here.
We should all be equal. James City, Highland, Russell City, we're all equal.
Well, I bought a house. I wasn't buying one in James City, that's damn sure. So, I went to Highland. We don't have bullshit out there that you people in here fight about every goddamn thing there is.
Watch your mouth.
I'm sorry. Can I have one of them Home Rule books before I leave?
We'll get an extra one for you.
I'm ready to leave now.
We'll bring one to your house then. See ya. Nice, nice having you here.
Would you pick one up, drop it off for me by your house, pal?
Oh, boy.
Will you vote for me, for supervisor, and I'll vote for you, supervisor?
Not me. I don't.
Excuse me, but we're having a meeting. Stop it.
I'll see ya.
I'd vote.
See, this is the kind of stuff I'm talking about. Here's the lady that's got upset with Joe, and he's, Joe's not. And we all know Joe.
He's entertaining.
He's not entertaining. He's a little slow.
Well, I thought he brought a couple of good points.
Yes, he did.
You know, I mean, other than swearing, I shouldn't have said that. I just didn't want him to swear at a public meeting. That was it.
He's, this young lady, take care of it. This is what I'm talking about. Here's the guy that boom.
Well, this, that's not what this meeting's about. This meeting's about what we've studied, and if there's any questions that have anything to do with the township.
What you studied. Now, we're talking about another township that's approximately the same as this one. Where's this at?
This is in Grant Township.
Where's Grant Township?
Where exactly is Grant Township?
City of Indiana, Tony. Down by Indiana.
Down by Indiana.
Pennsylvania.
Pennsylvania.
Well, yeah.
Down on four twenty-two.
And if you want to read more, St. Mary's is Home Rule also.
St. Mary's is.
Yeah, St. Mary's. St. Mary's City.
Warren City is.
Actually, there's a whole list of them.
Yeah.
Here's, that's what we did.
Conference call last meeting.
We had, we actually talked.
That'll solve all my problems.
Yep.
We actually talked to Grant Township at our last meeting, and I've talked to Elk Township personally. Here's a list of all the municipalities, see, it's pretty small writing, of all the municipalities in Pennsylvania that are Home Rule. This isn't a new concept. We are not, we are not the only ones trying to look at this.
I know that it's not new. I understand that. I just didn't, you were comparing me to another township.
Yes. I, I chose Grant Township to compare Highland to, because they're relatively the same size. And matter of fact, Stacy Long is a township supervisor currently there, and I had spoken with her. We all spoke with her at our last meeting. Stacy, Grant Township actually has about one and a half times the amount of people that Highland does, so they're small also. And they also have problems with, you know, an injection well possibly coming through their township. So, they know what we're going through with the oil companies and that kind of things. And they know what it takes to run a small township. Stacy Long, being a township supervisor, you know, knows the ins and outs of the day-to-day activities that have to happen in a township. When I questioned our own supervisors, there wasn't a lot of information that they were, that they wanted to share with me. So, that's when we decided to talk to Stacy Long, who is a Home Rule municipality from Grant Township, and she was able to share more information with me, with us.
Now, with this commission, deal with the Allegheny Forest, because that surrounds us. And we're already having problems with that.
Allegheny National Forest is a, is a federal.
Yes, ma'am.
That's federal land.
Yes, ma'am.
Home Rule municipalities are, will still be subservient to a federal and state laws.
And we're getting thirty or forty more injection wells in Alznes, and that's state forest. But they pass through our roads. They, at one time, and I'm just bringing this up because I don't know why, but they're supposedly supposed to take care of their roads, and they don't. They run heavy equipment at night, as you guys all know. And, you know, it's, it's out of hand out there. But your commission couldn't handle that either, huh?
What we're hoping to do is make you, as a property owner, you know, somebody that this is happening to beside, we want to make your voice more heard, louder. We want to make you be able to have a voice and say, hey, this is bothering me. And maybe in your charter, you should put something in there so they can't do this beside my house anymore.
Well, I'm very appreciative of what you, and your concern for me, but I'm not really concerned for my properties. But I am concerned on this commission. I, I, but once I read this thing and maybe I can come back and understand a little bit better than what I'm understanding now, because I don't like what I see. I'm telling you. You can't have six, seven, eight people telling three people what to do. That's never.
No, that's, that's not what this is about. We dissolve. After, if we decide to do this charter, we go away. Our job is done.
But, John, the charter is, if we do decide to write a charter, you, as a voting member of Highland Township, you have a say in it. You either can vote yes for the charter or no for the charter. We all have a say if we decide to write a charter. But the charter is going to help amend the township code with problems that people want to put into it, and they're looking to solve. Things that are affecting us. Because what we're trying to get through is, this is so generic. We're trying to tailor this for Highland Township, what works best for us. But it doesn't matter what we set up here, what we write, and that's why we want input from you. The bottom line is, when this is all said and done, if we do write a charter, the people have to vote on it in Highland Township for it to become.
Yeah, you're going out to a vote. If they vote for your charter, then who's going to be on the commission that tells these people?
It wasn't. Actually, you are, you are writing a commit, it will help supersede this. Therefore, it will be a form of binding law that they have to follow. That's what the supervisors have to follow.
Who makes it?
State.
The state.
And also the people of the township. If it's written there, then it's the people of the township can say it's here, and you can.
I'm going to ask Chad, would you be able to, maybe simplify that?
Different language?
Because we're not really wording it.
This book was written in nineteen thirty-three. It's called the Second Class Township Code. It's been amended a couple of times. And this is the set of operating rules and regulations that.
Excuse me. Who the heck are you?
I introduced myself last time. Sorry. Chad Nicholson with Seldef, the Legal Defense Fund. We were retained by the Government Study Commission to offer legal and historical services to them.
Very well, boys, I can tell you that.
Not an attorney. We do have an attorney with the organization here as well, Natalie Long. But the question, I believe, was how to simplify the difference between the code and the Home Rule Charter. So, this second-class township code is a series of rules and regulations that operate to give instructions to all supervisors in all second-class townships in Pennsylvania. So, there's approximately fifteen hundred second-class townships, just like Highland, all over the state. They range in size. Highland's on the small end, about five hundred people. In some townships outside of Philly, there's up to fifty or sixty thousand people. So, you've got one book that is basically telling you, the supervisors in all of these townships, what they can and can't do. And it was written by bureaucrats in Harrisburg a long time ago. A charter, if one is written, basically takes the place of this book. And it's not the people in Harrisburg that are giving instructions to the supervisors anymore. It's the people of the township that are then giving instructions to the supervisors about how they want them to act and what kinds of decisions they want them to make. So, they then have to abide by the charter, the local constitution that's actually voted in by the people of this community, not by people in Harrisburg, long ways away. So, it transfers the governing authority and the decision-making authority from Harrisburg to the people that actually live here. That's the difference.
These, these people up here are not going to rewrite that book, John. They're not going to rewrite that book. They're just going to tweak here and there where they think we need it.
Right.
What would you say, Chad? Ninety percent of that is going to be the same?
Depends on what they, they do. I mean, it sounded like from the study, because we've been listening over the past couple of months, that they find a lot of this to be pretty good. That there are some problems with it that have been identified by the Government Study Commission. And if they move ahead with writing a charter, their task would be to remedy the things that they found wrong with this. And so, it's really up to them in terms of how much of it they would want to change. But it seems like they find this to be pretty effective for most of the day-to-day operations, but that they do want some more accountability for the supervisors, which they could then write into a charter. But it's up to them.
And just one example, John, that they mentioned earlier, just like when they had two supervisors go and pick a third one. The judge from Elk County picked a supervisor that I believe that the majority of the people in the township didn't want. So, where if they can put this into the charter, that the people have a say to vote a third supervisor in, then it's up to the people to make that decision.
And not a judge in Elk County deciding down in Ridgeway that has no clue what's going on up here. The people know, so it'll give the people back the vote to vote who they want in to supervise instead of a judge.
So, that's just one example. They had a person in the election that lost by a few votes that we knew the people wanted, but the judge didn't want to pick him. This way, the people would have a choice.
Just saying, you said it last time. You're running so down during, you had two votes.
The person he picked. Does that make sense?
Any more questions, comments, concerns?
Yeah, I'd like to just state what I think I've heard.
Okay.
Presently, if there's two supervisors made a very unpopular decision, there is very little that people can do about it under the present structure.
Currently, that's correct.
That is correct.
And if with the Home Rule, the people would be able to tell the supervisors regardless of their beliefs, this is the way it's going to be?
Correct. Currently, there's very little that the township, that, what your opinion, whether we should have this injection well ordinance or not, there's, there's no account of, no value in your opinion. It's currently up to the three township supervisors to have a vote of two. If we were currently in a Home Rule municipality, what would, could happen is we took this petition that's got over three hundred names on it and bring it to the township supervisors and say, we don't want you to drop this ordinance. We want you to keep it. At that point in time, they continue to say, you know, and this is just an example, if it's written into the rule, into the rule. They continue to say, it doesn't matter what you want. No, according to the Home Rule Charter section, whatever, this has to be brought to a vote. You cannot make a decision. You cannot make a decision on this ordinance until it's brought to a vote. It's a whole referendum process that we have to learn about. I'm not an expert on it, I don't know exactly how it works, but I intend to learn in the next couple of months. But there will be a referendum process that will give these petitions, in your opinions, more value than what you currently have.
Now, let me intercede here just a moment. What this gentleman just said to you was, he would come in with a problem to the supervisors, but he has to have a petition to get anything done.
The petition that you've brought forth is stating that you have an issue.
If we have a problem with a decision that's made by the supervisor.
And that's how you present it to the supervisor.
He presents the fact that he has a problem with that. Now, in order to proceed, he would have to go get a petition up in order to proceed.
That would be in a referendum process that is not yet drawn up.
Well, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out.
Right, we would have to make a decision and how that was going to be drawn up first.
It couldn't be just one person coming in with a single complaint, it would have to come, come from the majority of the township residents.
But somebody has to initiate this, this is what I'm trying to say.
Yes, that's right.
And I, and I follow in what you're saying there, and I, and I.
Yeah, going, going back to this as an example.
Yeah, this is, this, this was initiated by somebody.
I understand what you're saying, young lady, and I believe everybody here does. What I'm trying to say to you is, he brought up a good point. Here's a, a problem that needs challenged. He comes in and he challenges it, but the only way that he can do anything is to go out and get a majority petition and then bring it back.
Actually, I don't believe it's.
The question that you're asking hasn't been written yet.
I, I don't believe it's a majority. Chad, in Grant, what's their percentage on a petition that they have to initiate initiative?
So, if a decision is made by the supervisors, say an ordinance is passed that the community doesn't want, or doesn't like, they could initiate a referendum process, which means that that ordinance would then go up for a vote of the people at the next election. To initiate that process, they need ten percent, ten percent of the people that voted in the last gubernatorial election, that's the required number of signatures to be on that petition. And then that petition, it can be brought forward to the supervisors for discussion, but ultimately, it would be submitted to the Board of Elections, and then that question would be put up for a vote of the people at the next available election.
Now, ten percent of, here I think it's like three hundred and.
Thirty people.
Three hundred and thirty people, so you, you talk about.
We're talking thirty people.
Yeah, you're talking about, so we're talking about a majority, no, you don't have to give thirty people to sign a petition? Based on our population?
Yeah, kind of what's going on in this community right now, my friend, is that you have thirty people that are on one side, and another thirty on his side, another thirty over here, I, that's. What I, what I wanted to, to become plain is what this gentleman said was the fact that he could come in and, and he could say, well, I disagree with this here, and for whatever reason, and then he would have to go out and get his thirty people to sign this petition.
Thirty like-minded people, like, for example, what kind of, hypothetically, what, what would an issue that?
What would be an issue that concern you, sir?
Overspending.
Overspending.
I don't think he'd have trouble.
Yeah, I think a lot of people would agree with you if they thought they were.
Give examples.
You know, but it's, it's, it's going to be very difficult with the people in our township.
It can't be, it can't be any more difficult than it is now.
Yeah, John.
Where you have no say.
And then you got to come in with a petition and.
They don't look at petitions now, they look at that whole list of people on there?
They don't even listen to what you say.
Yeah, they look at those petitions and throw them out the door right now.
This gives you a chance to hear your voice being heard.
I don't need a chance.
Well, I, I, I'm just using it as an analogy, but at least, if you believe in something really vehemently, and you have a petition, and people come up here and nobody wants to listen to you, at least there's a chance for it to go on the ballot and something to change, for what people believe in.
Presenting a petition to three gentlemen who have already said no to whatever you're talking about.
And it would have to go on the ballot.
Who's the commission that's going to come up and say it? Or is this going to a referendum?
Yes, it's fifty-one percent of voters.
Yeah, and then it goes back to the voters.
You're doing good, thank you.
No, yeah, you're good, thank you.
Well, he's trying to catch up at all in one meeting.
John, you're asking a lot of questions that other people probably want to ask, that's why we're here, we're here to talk.
Did you get your question answered?
You're helping, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate what you folks are doing, don't misunderstand me, but it's, it's difficult when you know what's going on here, and what could go on here, and what could possibly happen here. And I know, I know that you people up here are good-hearted people, as we all are, but something has to be done here, no question of that, and, and maybe this is the answer, I don't know. I, so far, I'm being convinced, and I'm being convinced by you folks, and I know this lady's done a lot of work, and I know that Mr. Edinger does a lot of work. And this gentleman over here is smarter than I am, and I don't like that.
Referring to Tim Garrity.
I have, I have a quick question for you, you said something about your problem, you know, one of your, your feel strongly about the overspending in Highland Township, do you have an example?
I don't. Just one of the things that concerns me when I see tax money not getting the best, the most for your dollars.
We've got a new truck and nobody to drive it. We can't get any asphalt to put onto the roof.
We can't get any gravel, John.
Gravel, hell, they gravel, they grabbled the damn asphalt out of it.
But they, they don't want to spend no money, I mean, you're up here.
Excuse me, sir, what, what's your name? Frank Royer, I'm Matt Long, nice to meet you.
Laurie, you had your hand raised a little bit ago.
Thank you. Frank, thank you for coming up.
Okay, thank you.
That's why I, I didn't mean to interrupt, thank you.
The question I thought was just how many people you would need on a petition, and you and John answered that, so thank you.
Anybody?
Frank, you were saying?
It appears to me as if the home rule is a fourth vote, instead of three supervisors, there are four.
Yes. With, with Highland Township residents being the fourth and strongest vote.
They were, they are more than one vote, and guess who would?
Guess who hurts?
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, three Highland Township supervisors go strong on an issue. Home rule says no, they, they are outvoted.
Yeah, fifty-one percent, fifty-one percent of voters vote.
Yeah, it goes to the voters to decide.
I'm positive everyone has heard, too many cooks spoil the broth. Initially, initially, initial, you hire people or appoint people to run, do this for me, I'm trusting in you. That's, that's the way it should work. Or if you have, every, every decision to be fifty people in a discussion is so slow, you need someone to say, this is the way it's going to be, and leave. I like this idea of the fourth vote being the people's vote.
Yes.
That's our.
It's a very good example.
That's our main focus.
That's our main focus, is given the rights, instead of three, given the fourth person, which is the whole voters in Highland Township to vote.
And mind you, that probably won't be for every decision that's made. It won't be for, how much gravel are we going to buy for the winter? That's still, those kind of things, or are we going to pay our electric bills? Those kind of things are still going to rest in the day-to-day operations within our supervisors' duties. What happens is when it gets really big, nobody's allowed to have dogs in Highland Township anymore, just as an example. Nobody can have dogs in Highland Township. Wait, now there's three supervisors, none of them have dogs, so none of them like it. And therefore, getting rid of dogs in Highland Township. Now, Highland Township residents have dogs, we all do, and we're like, wait, that's not, that's, that's not right. You can't take that right from me. Currently, they can. Within a second-class township, then you come up and you have your thirty, you know, forty signatures, and you say, I want to have dogs in Highland Township, and so do these people, and I want it to go to a vote in November. It does.
And then when you're able to trump the supervisors with the vote, then they're more apt to probably listen to the people.
Then they have to follow the rule that we're allowed to have dogs in Highland Township. And that's just an example, that's not something that's currently happening, that was just a, hopefully ridiculous example. Excuse me?
Sounds a hell of a lot better zoning.
We got that example. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
You guys want to say anything over here?
I think you guys are doing a good job and I'm proud of you.
Thank you.
Also, to let people know too, is that we're doing all of this, is volunteer. This, our study group has not cost the township any money.
Yes.
We are.
We have not taken one township taxpayer dollar to date, not one. They were up here saying it's going to cost the township hundreds of thousands of dollars, to date. We are, you know, three months in, four months into our study, and we have not taken one township taxpayer dollar.
How are you funded?
How are we funded? We are all funded by private donations and fundraisers. Collecting cans, collecting bottles, selling cookies, people just giving us donations out of their.
Goodness of their heart.
Goodness of their heart.
In kind, because I remember when we had the.
Yep, we've gotten paper donated, postage donated, those kind of things. Not one penny has been spent out of the taxpayer dollar.
I'll go ahead, Tim.
One question, when is your next meeting and where is that, so that if anybody decides to leave early, and if you get the information out where your next meeting is?
Our next meeting is August fourth at the Snowseekers in Highland.
And would you encourage more people to come?
Definitely.
Absolutely.
If you've heard this today, maybe you can tell somebody, bring somebody with you.
Please tell somebody, please tell somebody in Highland Township, and please come.
Yeah, and if you can't make it, you can't make it to the meeting, you can't take the, you know, the stress of the meetings.
It's at seven o'clock, too.
It's at seven o'clock PM. But if you can't come to the meeting for one reason or another, personal, you can write that stuff down. Write your questions, comments, concerns down. Come to the meeting, drop it off and leave. Just give us your comments, your concerns, your, we want to hear from each and every one of you, and everyone that's not here today, we want to hear from them. And if you don't want to come to and sit to in a two-hour meeting in a building that's ninety degrees, that, that's fine, I get it. Drop, write, write your questions, comments, concerns on a piece of paper, drop them off, hand them to one of us, and go. You don't have to stay. We encourage you to, but you don't have to.
Well, John just mentioned something back here that some people are intimidated by coming to the meeting. And the thing is, if you keep letting that happen, people will be intimidated, nothing will happen. So, I mean, that's one thing, is to try and stop intimidation, and if, again, like Missy said, if you can get a question, you know.
Just pass the word around, our meetings are civil. We, we just want people to come.
But your meetings weren't for blow.
No, no, no.
No, remember the township meetings, we're talking about home rule.
But what I'm trying to say to you, my friend, is.
The township.
The township meetings were not civil. This is the word that's out. People don't want to bring their missus in and listen to the kind of.
Right.
That's true.
They're afraid to, they're afraid. The, the word on the street is that somebody's going to kill somebody.
Right.
Well, that's why I'm saying, please come to our meeting. Maybe that's something we should look in and tone it down in the meeting.
This is the first one I came to, this is.
Can we do that this time?
Thank God.
Well, pass the word, that's what.
Well, that's what you can do, but you know, you've got people that hurt so many bad things that they don't want to hear the good things.
Okay, all right. And once we close this out.
What is the, what's the schedule, sequence of events that's going to happen here?
The sequence of events, when we're finished with the public comment here, we're actually going to have a vote of commissioners, whether to, whether to or not to write a charter, or if more study is needed. At that point in time, if we decide to write a charter, we will start writing that and be able to report in our August meetings, and see how that goes. If we decide that more study is needed, then, at the end of this, then nothing happens except more study is needed, and then a vote will come in the future. If we decide tonight that the second-class township code is sufficient for Highland, then this committee can dissolve at that point.
Well, now, at your next meeting, folks, all of you, all of you, these two got to come. Because they make more sense than a whole bunch of you.
They're educated in law and everything, and in home rule.
They've done this before, we're still all pretty new.
Well, I, I understand that too, but he's very good at what he says, and he's very, can really clarify a lot of things.
Good.
In my mind, and I appreciate him being here. It's like, get somebody to come. I, I'd like him to be at the next meeting so that they can understand what you're being said, because people are afraid of you people. They are, they are, they're scared of you people.
It's something different. That's why committees. And the rumors of the idiocy playing.
Well, John, you can spread the word that we're not here to take anything from anybody, we're here to help you get back. Sure.
People are scared that you can't blame.
This is not a township meeting.
Well, I know that, but.
No, but they are, they're afraid to come because of other people that you're saying.
I know, but if we keep talking about it.
Well, we're talking about going out and telling people that this was, meeting was conducted very well.
And they always are. And Chad and Natalie are always on the beck and call, we can call, email, text, scale.
Even if they're not physically here, they're with us all the time.
We Skype all the time.
Call us at home anytime?
You call me anytime, I call you.
We have to finish public comment.
This young lady right here does a hell of a lot to this township.
Yes, she does.
Most people know, she's into everything, she does everything, and nobody likes her, but that's okay.
Sometimes Marcia doesn't like herself.
But you know, we need more people like her to get out and go door to door and, and to do the things.
Absolutely.
But I'll tell you something, the Hooligan toilet was appointed, was door to door.
Yeah, I heard one, some of the things it said.
And he was, all of his people that run the town, not the township, but the county, you know, he was down there talking to the county, and that goes to the judge too. You know, they, he worked the system, it worked well for him, there's nothing wrong with it.
I wish I had that much time on my hands.
Both someone's honest about what they say, I don't have a problem with it, it's the lies I have a problem with.
Well, there's a lot of people that tell you to your face one thing and do something behind your back, there's no question of that.
Well, that's right, I don't believe in that.
I had a question.
What he does, but it happens.
I had a question, does anybody in the community have anything that they might want to see changed?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Give examples?
Like examples?
Our Sunday office is owned by people ought to be maintained if they're going to sit empty. The yards need to be maintained, and they shouldn't be falling over and in disarray, or they need to be torn down. Not ramp, running rampant with mice and rats.
So, property vacancies and their upkeep?
There's a lot of stuff out in the township.
I was told I had to address my neighbor.
As a whole, the same thing that this young lady is talking about too. There's a lot of dilapidated buildings. That on the weekends, when the people come up from the other communities to our community to ride the trails and this and that, the buildings are dilapidated, the kids are there, they're into them. Now, today, on my way in, and this is while I was late, there was children riding up and down Sackett Road in four-wheelers that had no helmets, no nothing on, and nothing's done about it. Now, you know, I mean, there's nothing here that we can do about it, but that's what's happening out there. They can also get into these dilapidated buildings. Now, there's several out there, I have already talked to the supervisors, they have no, we already have a precedence against this here. They took one down on sixty-six. And they took it down, you know, they gave the people the time to take it down, or they were going to take it down, the people took it down. But we've got a lot of them out there that need to be taken down for safety, just safety. You're like, let me tell you that, you know, that's about the, the scariest thing you have in this township, other than the people, is the buildings that could hurt somebody. I mean, roofs are caved in, and this and that, and it's, and, so on Sackett Road, it's, it's here, it's.
It's everywhere, there's at least seven of them in, in James.
It's everywhere. There's at least seven of them in, in James City themselves. So, there are seven here, probably ten or eleven out there. They're all over Highland Township.
Yes. And as long as this group's here, you guys in that fire department do one hell of a job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you take care of the people on the trails that get hurt, and there's a lot of them that get hurt. These people are there, and I tell them that every time I see them, because I believe it. God help you, you know, I mean, you're running a small fire department. I heard you was gonna get closed down. Christ, I'm tired. You know, I'm telling you, when people get hurt out there, there's nobody, no way to find them. At least these people know where the hell half the trails are. This is just, I'm just throwing this out.
Yeah, just, just to let you know too-
Somebody needs water. They ship water out Highland Township as well, too.
Well, they come to the fire for more water destruction. That happens. It happened to me, but that's beside. Anyway, James City should have its own charter, and Highland Township should become part of Highland Township. They could have the city. Right here. The township should have a town and this and that. I just, it's, it's, it's nice to get a group here that wants to do something, because there are damn few people. When they came, there's nobody, even a lot of sitting the damn bench and came, they want to roust you.
Okay.
Is that like an EBT card or something?
Anybody else have anything? Any other public comment?
Okay, I make a motion that we vote on whether now we have a charter or not.
I'll second that motion.
I made a charter.
All in favor?
All in favor.
All in favor?
Of, in favor of what?
Dropped in a charter.
Dropped in the charter.
Of actually drafting a charter?
Yes.
That's what you said, wasn't it, John?
Yep.
Yes.
Well, I think between the discussions today, our studies in the past, and our discussions today, I see that, I think it's not only our opinion, but a lot of the public opinion, that the second-class township code that we currently operate does not fit all of our needs, does meet some of them, but not all of them. And I think we should, I'm in agreement that we should write a charter to possibly make our township stronger, better, and hopefully more unified.
I completely agree with you, Missy.
And an air conditioner for the municipal building.
Yeah.
Yes. I'll, I'll second that motion too.
Oh.
Should we do a show of hands on this?
Yes, please.
Show of hands?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Want me to explain?
Keep going. Go fast.
Uh, what do I do? This meeting adjourned, didn't it?
Yep.
But, uh, they know our next meeting?
Yeah, we announced it.
Okay.
Yeah, meeting adjourned.